The Pittsburgh City Council meeting to order. Councilor Boishman, would you please lead us in the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you please conduct the roll call?
President Kushnerick.
Present.
Counselor Bean, Counselor Boishman.
Present.
Counselor Beazall.
Present.
Counselor Clark.
Here.
Counselor Dean Atali.
Here.
Counselor Donnelly.
Here.
Counselor Green.
Present.
Counselor Joseph.
Here.
Counselor Caddy.
Here.
Counselor Tran.
Here.
Public forum. Anyone wishing to speak on any matter on the agenda may do so for not more than two minutes. If you are addressing public hearing petitions, you will have an opportunity to speak at that time. Now, please approach the center table and identify yourself by name and address for the record and the item on the agenda to which you are speaking. Does anyone wish to speak? Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello, my name is Peter Lemay. I'm Seven Keystone Way in Dover. As you're aware, at the last meeting, we requested a continuance until tonight so we could seek clarification on the NICE Committee recommendations regarding Petition 13 on 2016. We thank attorneys Mark Goldstein and Vincent Pousatieri for their assistance in this matter. Robert Lansiani Duffy has added clarifying language to the revised letter dated March 29th. Today in his office, he also provided additional clarification regarding the ceiling height for the third floor by identifying the section of the building code relating to existing structures. We feel it would be appropriate to remove the Petition 13 on 2016 from its tabled status and move forward with a vote for the special permit request with the conditions stated in the NICE Committee dated March 29, 2016. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any others wishing to speak at this time? Moving on to the agenda. Oh, sorry. You can come forward. Chief Roy. Good evening.
Evening, councilors. Thank you. I'll be brief. I know it's going to be a long night. Just always a pleasure to come here and give our annual report to the council and the mayor each year. It's the 146th Annual Report of the Fire Department, the 21st report that I've submitted to you folks. As most of you know, we work pretty hard in our department. Our people do a great job. We literally save tens of millions of dollars in tax property and, more importantly, hundreds of lives each year with the 6,000 or 7,000 medical calls we do each year. Each year, we set goals. We try to accomplish those goals. We work hard at it. And as always, I appreciate the council's support in the direction we've been heading, which is a good direction. One disturbing thing over the last 24 months, we have had five people die in building fires in the city, so we've got some work to do. But certainly, if there's any questions, anybody has anything they would like to talk about, as always, I know I hear from a number of councilors, we'd be more than happy to answer your questions at any time. And once again, thanks for the support of the council on matters that come before your body. Thank you, councilors.
Thank you, chief. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Moving on to the agenda. There are no objections. We'll now hear an oral report from the Appointments Committee, Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Appointments Committee met earlier this evening and had several appointments. The first one being a new appointment to the Historical Commission, Ms. Ellen D. Geronimo, 197 Bridle Cross Road, Pittsburgh, for the term to expire on February 1st, 2019. For trustee of burial grounds, Ms. Judith Perla, 236 Walton Street, Pittsburgh, for a term to expire January 1st, 2019. Zoning Board of Appeals, Attorney Anna R. Phillips, 559 Pearl Hill Road, Pittsburgh, for a term to expire January 1st, 2021. And finally, Ms. Mary Ann Guichard. Guichard. I got it, son of a gun. Ms. Guichard, 245 River Street, Pittsburgh, term to expire February 1st, 2019. That is a reappointment.
I have a motion and second to accept the Appointments Committee report. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous. I'd just like to bring attention to those members who are newly appointed, who are here in the audience this evening, Ms. Ellen D. Geronimo, Ms. Judith Perla, and Ms. Anne Guichard, Mary Ann Guichard. Thank you to all those who are here tonight and for the service that you will give to the city in its future. Report from the Committee on Records, Counsel Green.
Yes, I'd like to report the minutes from the last city council meeting are in order.
I have a motion and second to accept the Committee on Records' report. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous. Communications from His Honor, the mayor. We have six listed on the agenda this evening. Letters of appointment as follows. Mr. John Early to the Airport Commission to fill a balance on the term of Mr. Kit Walker, term to expire February 1st, 2017. B, Mr. Andrew Hawthorne to the Trustees of Public Burial Grounds, term to expire January 1st, 2019. Communication C, Ms. Nina Nazarian to the Water Waste Water Commission, term to expire January 1st, 2020. Communication D, Mr. Joshua Champagne to the Water Waste Water Commission, term to expire January 1st, 2020. Communication E, Retired Lieutenant Glennsey Fawcett to serve as a special police officer for the City of Pittsburgh. Communication F, Retired Detective Perry Pappas to serve as a special police officer for the City of Pittsburgh.
Appointments Committee.
I have a motion and second to send the six appointments to the Appointments Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous. Communications and reports from department heads. I have three communications. Communication one from the NICE Task Force regarding special permit, 1316. Communication two from the Pension Reserve Investment Management Board, and Communication three from the Pittsburgh Retirement Board.
Motion to communications be put on file in the clerk's office.
Counselor Caddy.
The communication from the NICE Task Force, Petition 13216, 2016. I see the billing inspector here. Is it possible that we could take this out of order? It's last on our agenda. This is going to be a lengthy meeting so that the billing inspector doesn't have to sit here all night.
Counselor, I suppose we could remove that from the table at that time. Any problems with doing that, Anna?
Motion to suspension. The rules to remove 132016 from the table.
I have a motion and second to remove 132016 from the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The item is before you.
Mr. President, could we hear from the Building Commissioner, and he could talk about the letter that he sent us?
Sure. Mr. Lansiani, I believe you're here this evening. If you wouldn't mind just briefly addressing your communication.
I have, and I believe Counselor Boishman gave you, may have given all of you who came in today, with Attorney Goldstein, the applicants had asked for some changes to the letter that I had originally sent you. I felt that several of them would take away from the building code and state law, but I had made two concessions, which are in red on the one that Counselor Boishman got today. Under Item 3, which was on the original one, I've added that all common areas would be completed before any units can be occupied. And once all of the common areas have been completed, our apartments may be occupied as they become completed. The occupants had wanted to be able to, the applicants had wanted to be able to occupy some of the apartments before the entire project was done. By state building code, that is allowed as long as all of the common areas are in compliance so that there's safe egress. I felt that, in talking with Mark, the way that we had amended my original letter, gave them what they were looking for, but stayed on task with the building codes. And on that question, point number five, rather, I had said that a valid certificate of inspection must be received before any units can be occupied. That is by state law. Anything other than a one or two-family building, a certificate of inspection must be held before a three-decker or commercial building can be occupied. I clarified and said that a partial certificate of inspection will be issued for phased construction. With several projects in the city, when there's been phased construction, the building department has worked with the owners of the project and issued partial certificates of inspection so that the parts that are complete can be occupied. I feel that adding those two to my original things that the NICE Committee had approved unanimously to support gives the applicants a little more leeway, but still holds them to the standards of the state law and building codes.
Motion to accept Petition 13.
Counselor, I have one counsel with further questions, if you would like. Counselor Beazall.
You can do that anytime. Yeah, go ahead.
Counselor Beazall.
Thank you. Just out of curiosity, so I'm looking at this, and I'm looking at the Massachusetts Code. R-2 says dormitory and R-2 congregate living. And I guess the terminology for that is basically, they are going to have, from my understanding, three people living in there that are not related that share the same bathroom facilities, kitchen facilities, and that actually falls under the same, it looks as dormitories.
That is not what they've said. They have said, the applicants have said, there are going to be an apartment building, four apartments. They, if it's four separate apartments, it doesn't fall under dormitory. It falls under apartment building.
Right.
I don't disagree with you that it looks and smells at times like some of their projects are other than what we're supposed to have as an apartment building, but in the requirement that we see a copy of the lease, which I would not take out, I feel that that's appropriate, that the City of Pittsburgh, because of some of the other properties that they have and the way they're running them, and their statements to you about how their lease went during the public hearing, the way they presented that their leases are, they were running boarding houses or something. In this building, they said that the lease will be so that it's apartments. If it is apartments, we want to be able to verify that it's apartments and not a rooming house or a dormitory or some other type of building that would need more oversight than an apartment building.
And so, in the future, if we find out that this is under the user group R-2, it requires that we do minimum inspections of semi-annual, or we do one a year. Is that, is that something that we'll follow up on, or is it?
An R-2 dormitory, an R-2 rooming house, et cetera, we inspect annually. An R-2 apartment building, because R-2 is multiple things, it's not just dormitories, it's also apartment buildings.
Yep.
If it's an R-2 apartment building, the certificate of inspection is good for five years. I have asked that we do inspections twice a year on this building so that we can confirm, at least initially, that it's being run as an apartment house.
Okay.
If it's run as an apartment house and the city does not have problems with it, I would then probably defer to the annual inspections to be less as other apartment houses in Pittsburgh are inspected.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion to accept 132016 with the seven conditions laid out by the Building Commission and the NICE Committee.
I have a motion and second to accept Petition 132016 with the attached stipulations or conditions as stated by Commissioner Lansiani and the NICE Committee. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous. Moving back to the agenda, counselors, we had three communications. Entertain a motion at this time to accept said communications.
I can't hear.
I have a motion and second to send Communications 2 and 3 to the city clerk's office to be placed on file. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Communication other, I have one communication from the Sommel Pond Condo Association referencing ordinance number 462016. Counselors, I believe this communication was listed in the packet. Do we need action on that, or can it just be stated?
Just refer to the ordinance.
Okay. So, we'll refer that to the particular ordinance when it's taken up in committee. Moving forward to the annual reports, O-5116, annual report, Pittsburgh Fire Department, 2015. Counselor.
Second.
Counselor, we have a motion and a second to waive the reading of O-51, the annual report from the Pittsburgh Fire Department, and to place it on file in the city clerk's office. Anyone wishing to speak to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Moving forward onto the agenda. Anna M. Farrell, City Clerk, 23115. Counselor Angelo Beazall to change the hours of voting from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., to 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and that was recommended that be granted by the city clerk. I have a motion and second to accept 23115. Anyone wishing to speak to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous. Finance Committee, Counselor Dean Atali.
Mr. President, Finance met last Tuesday, took up the following, 332016. Order, the City of Pittsburgh approves the expenditure of funds from the Mass. Executive Office of Public Safety for the FY16 Fire Safe Trailer Grant in the approximate amount of $1,800. That was adopted. 342016, order that there being hereby is appropriated the sum of $65,000 to the fire capital, departmental equipment, and charge against available funds. That was adopted. 4116, order that the City of Pittsburgh hereby approves the expenditure of funds from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, as administered through the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, for the FY16 Fire Emergency Performance Grant in the approximate amount of $14,600 for the purposes of said grant. That was adopted. 3516, City of Pittsburgh approves the expenditure of funds from the Mass. Executive Office of Public Safety and Security for the FY16 Shannon Community Safety Initiative Grant in the approximate amount of $169,274.72. That was adopted. 3616, order that there being hereby is transferred the sum of $6,000 to health expenses from health personal services. That was adopted. 4216, order that the City of Pittsburgh hereby approves the expenditure of funds from the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection for the FY16 Health Sustainable Materials Grant in the approximate amount of $19,000 for the purposes of said grant. That was adopted. And last but not least, there were three additional orders regarding the School Department. 4316 involves Crocker Elementary School. 4416 involves South Street Elementary School. And 4516 involves Goodrich School. These were statements of interest to the Mass. School Building Authority for, to get on the next round of funding from the state. And those were all adopted, as amended to state April 5th, 2016, for both the dates for the open meeting and statement of interest form.
Motion to accept the Finance Committee report.
I have a motion and second to accept the Finance Committee report. Counselors.
Minus 34, excluding 3416. Minus 416.
I have a motion and second to adopt the Finance Committee report excluding 3416. Speaking to the motion, Counselor Cadd.
I just want to speak 4316, 4416, 4516. 4416 is the South Street School. The next one is Crocker, et cetera, and Goodrich. But I guess the point I want to make, several years ago, we went through this before, I'm very concerned we're going to possibly renovate these three schools. And I think that the long-term plan here is to vacate the Long Joe School, the old high school. The Long Joe School is probably the biggest building in our greater Main Street area. It can be seen from all points of Main Street. I think it's probably one of the best-built buildings around. And if the School Department moves forward with renovations to three schools, I think it's going to, I think eventually, they're going to hand us the keys to Long Joe. And I just, I'm not sure I can support these, I want to support these three petitions, but I'm just not sure that I can, given that I think that's what's going to happen in the future. I don't think that we're going to be able to take that building and put another art housing community in it. I think that school would be vacant for a very, very long time. And I don't think there would be a buyer for the building because there's no parking. I think as a middle school, when it was a high school, you had students that drove. As a middle school, you don't have students that drive. I think there's ample parking for the people that work there. And I'm just very worried about the future of that building. The city would never be able to afford demolition of that building, and I think it would just leave a great void in the Main Street area. Thank you.
Counselor Joseph.
3516, the Shannon Grant, I mean, that's a very competitive and important grant where it helps the youth of the City of Pittsburgh, and it collaborates with a lot of local organizations. And I don't think it really gets enough publicity. And I was just wondering if at a future meeting, we could get a report from the people, from the Shannon Grant, to the council, just as a special report, maybe to go over their annual report from last year and the number of youths that it has served in the City of Pittsburgh. But I really think it's important that we bring that forward and maybe get some more publicity for it.
Counselor, absolutely. Be happy to entertain that request and work with the city clerk to make sure we can schedule these folks to come before us for a special presentation.
Thank you.
Counselor Dean Atali.
Counselor Caddy raised some points about the future of one of our school buildings, and I agree with his concern. The items before us this evening are to get us on a list for future consideration, at which time they will come back to us, the School Department, for a more in-depth plan as to what they intend to do. This is just the first step. Be that as it may, be that, with that said, Crocker Elementary is, I don't want to make it sound really bad, but it's one of the last schools on the list. A lot of our schools have received renovation work over the past few years, and it shows Crocker has been at the end of the, at the end of the list. And after touring that school, I know Counselor Boishman came with me a few months ago, and I know the mayor has toured it, and other councilors, it is, I want to say it's embarrassing the condition in there. And whether we agree on the future of Crocker or the future of the Long Joe, the fact remains there has to be at a minimum mass renovations of the existing elementary school. Because I believe no matter what may happen down the road, that elementary school is still going to be there and be utilized, so we need to make sure at a minimum we fix that school up. Because there are sectors of it that are quite concerning and rather embarrassing to look at. So, we will have future discussions on this as the process moves forward, and I have no doubt that this issue will be raised, but for right now, my vote in favor of this is to get us even on the list with the state for reimbursement for school improvements. With the first and foremost glaring item before us is renovating that elementary school before we talk about anything else. Thank you.
Just speaking to Counselor Cadd's concern with regards particularly to Long Joe, well, I'm certainly concerned that, you know, vacating yet another large monolithic building in the downtown would be of detriment to the neighborhood and ward four. I agree with Counselor Dean Atali in that, I think, to act on those concerns or to not take action because of those concerns at this point would be premature, would be putting the cart before the horse, so to speak. I think at this point, this is merely the opportunity to explore this further, to see whether or not the state would be willing to fund future projects as it pertains to those particular buildings. So, I think we as a city should do our due diligence. We should explore where funding opportunities exist. Certainly, a day, you know, if everything were to move forward, a day would come where we would be called upon to act on an order. And certainly, I wouldn't favor any order that would abandon any of our schools without really a long-sighted look at how the buildings would then be used or not used, what actions we'd take on those buildings. And Mayor Dean Atali has assured me that, you know, any such actions would complement any orders on our school system, that we wouldn't just abandon a building without taking appropriate action as to what we could do next or how we could repurpose said buildings. So, I'm in favor of exploring these interests and seeing, you know, if and where the state will be willing to fund future building projects in our city. Counselor Boishman.
I agree with Counselor Cadd here 100%. And the reason why I say this is because of the simple fact that we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on BF Brown. And then all of a sudden, we packed it up, and we shut the doors, and we left behind almost a million dollars of repairs, and we thought nothing of it. As a taxpayer, as a taxpayer, I am upset that we wouldn't do this. If it was our properties, we would take care of it. We spent almost a million dollars on boilers in that building. We shut the power off, we let them sink underneath the water, and we no longer can use them, and we can no longer sell them. Almost a million dollars on that property, gone. And so, if we're going to start spending money like that, and then we're going to shut down Pittsburgh Long Joe, the old Pittsburgh High School, I don't understand why we're doing it. I mean, I took the call with Counselor Dean Atali, Crocker. Why do we wait so long? I don't understand why we wait so long. My house, if something breaks, I start repairing it. I add paint. I went to the Long Joe, and I thought it was in a dungeon. The art of tone, there's no paint, it's dull looking. You get depressed. I go into the gym, and I look around, and I say, we have our kids playing basketball here, and the roof is all stained. I mean, what does a can of paint cost? $35 to $40? And if you, really? We get no repairs. I don't understand. It's like, I get the impression, write it out, do minimal repairs, 20 years from now, we'll get the taxpayers to flip the bill again and put a new school up. That's the impression I get. And I get fed up as a person, not as a city council, as a taxpayer, as a taxpayer. Because I look at it this way. I am a senior citizen today, and my wages are set. I don't get raises. When I go to Market Basket, those days keep on going up, up and up. My milk keys aren't going up, but my wallet don't go up, it gets empty. And I plan on living to my house till the day I die, and I don't want to keep, don't want to lose it, because we need a new school, we need a new this, we need a new that. That's why I bring these questions up. And I'm sorry if I offend somebody, but I want to make sure that we're doing the right things here. I don't want to spend millions of dollars to fix up a school, and then all of a sudden, you say, throw the key away, we'll give it back to the City of Pittsburgh, we got our new school here. That's how I feel. Thank you very much for letting me sound off. Thank you very much for letting me sound off.
I have a motion and second to accept the Finance Committee report excluding thirty-four sixteen. Anyone wishing to speak to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to accept thirty-four sixteen.
I have a motion and second to accept thirty-four sixteen. Speaking to the motion, Councilor Boeschman.
Question sixty-five thousand dollars. I agree with thirty-three thousand dollars of it to repeat. The chief can talk.
Chief, if you wouldn't mind feeling the councilors' questions. I appreciate it.
Not a problem, councilor.
I'm sorry I didn't come to see you. I've been awful busy.
Nope, I'm sorry, councilor.
Because I usually do come to see you.
No, you do, and I appreciate that. Counselor, you probably know, actually, it's in the annual report, in the pages, late fifty pages. We have about fourteen support vehicles in the department, which we maintain very well. However, we've only bought three support vehicles in the last eleven years. We bought three in 2013, and the plan was then to buy one per year as part of my budget. That has not happened. Every year for the last three years, it's been cut out of the budget. I went to Mayor Dean Atalley and asked him, "We're in dire straits with these vehicles. These vehicles should not be in the road." And he was good enough to give me, for one vehicle. We did get two approved through the capital improvements. However, we had a major breakdown of one of our pumppers that we have to repair, and the mayor was good enough to give us the money to repair the pumper and give us one vehicle, even though we needed two. We need to keep on track, similar to what the police have done, is get this on track and buy one vehicle a year. It hasn't happened, so I'd ask you to support this, councilor. The vehicle I'm replacing is in tough shape and is really not roadworthy.
I understand what you're saying, because you're replacing the 2001 Chevy Blazer, right?
Correct, because that's in the worst shape.
Not to be a wise guy, but I own a 1994 Chevy pickup truck. I know it's not the same. And that thing's got 159,000 miles on it. Yes, it has some rot on it, and I had taken care of it, but it's still going strong.
I understand, councilor. In fact, the truck we're not replacing that needs to be replaced is a 1993. So that truck is 23 years old. Unfortunately, the salt and the sand and the road corrodes underneath these vehicles, and no matter what we do, the transmissions, the chassis, the springs become corroded, and they're just not repairable. They're not worth repairing, to be quite honest with you. We need them for emergency situations. They have to be dependable.
So let me ask you this. If this council says no this year, could you make it through another year with this Blazer?
That's what I've been told for the last three years of budget time by the mayor. So the answer was...the answer will be no. The vehicle will have to come off the road in the near future. I doubt it's going to pass its next inspection, which I think is in June.
It won't pass inspection?
No, the undercarriage is total rust in the way.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a...speaking to the motion, Councilor Green.
The sixty-five thousand dollars will purchase a new vehicle to replace that one?
That's correct.
Okay. So we're not sinking money into it to repair it?
We have not repaired it. That's why we've...we're using limited issues. I've not put any more money into it. It's not worth putting money into.
Okay. And what will sixty-five thousand dollars buy us?
The thirty-two thousand is for the new vehicle. The thirty-three thousand is for repairs to Engine One, a pumper that has some major work that needs to be done. And that is all ready to go. It's gone through purchasing. And if this money's approved tonight, we'll be able to authorize that contract. The truck is already up in Portsmouth, New Hampshire to be repaired.
Thank you.
I have a motion and second to approve thirty-four sixteen. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? One in opposition.
Thank you, councilor.
Thank you, chief. Planning Board, Twenty-nine, 2016. Vincent Pousatieri, the Second Esquire. As an individual owning land to be affected by change or adoption, Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, to amend Chapter 181.92 of the Code of the City of Pittsburgh's zoning entitled Board of Appeals by striking the words "At least one member shall be a member of the bar," and that was recommended that it be granted in councilors, I believe, that references a petition, a special...
Public hearing.
A public hearing later in the agenda. I have a motion and second to accept the Planning Board's report. Motion and second to accept the Planning Board's report. Anyone wishing to speak to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous. Public Safety Committee, Councilor Green.
Mr. President, we met on March 29, 2016, to take up the following orders. Twenty-five sixteen, Michael A. Ward of 15 Stedson Street in Leominster to refer to the Public Safety Committee the following. At times, dogs are subject to unnecessarily cruel treatment, the subject to locate the owners of lost dogs, or to locate adoptable homes for stray dogs, to examine and determine why a multitude of dogs have disappeared while under the supervision of the animal control officer. That petition was granted. Thirty-nine sixteen, a Class II car dealership petition of Carlos Bismarck Terrero, doing business as Millennium Motors at 34 Bemis Road. That was held. Counselor...Petition 243-15, Counselor Mike Kuzmeric to install a streetlight on Pool 392-1 located on Matson Street. That was given leave to withdraw. Petition 242-15, Counselor Paul Boeschman to put a gate at the end of Shattuck Street because of illegal activities and dumping near the quarries. That was referred to the Public Works Committee. Petition 208-15, Counselor Marcus Dean Atalley and Michael Hurley to review the feasibility of, and if warranted, installed streetlights along the curb where John Fitch Highway and Pearl Hill Road intersect, and along the right side of Pearl Hill Road going up to the entrance to the FSU Athletic Field entrance. That was given leave to withdraw. Petition 181-15, Counselor Michael Kuzmeric to install the height...to increase the height of a city-owned fence on Blossom Street between the intersections of Elm and Mechanic Street. That was referred to the Public Works Committee. Petition 180-15, Counselor Mike Kuzmeric to install a traffic mirror on Pearl Street opposite its intersection with Longwood Avenue. That was held in committee. And petition 298-13, Counselor Marcus Dean Atalley and Lori Wiley to erect a set of traffic lights at the intersection of Pearl Hill Road, North Street, and John Fitch Highway. That was given leave to withdraw.
Motion to accept the Public Safety Committee meeting's report.
I have a motion and second to accept the Public Safety Committee's report. Anyone wishing to speak to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Reciced hearing, zero-twenty-six, sixteen. Special permit petition, Zachary Fleckner, 226 Oak Hill Road, Pittsburgh, to renovate existing non-conforming two-family lot located at 12 Park Street, MAP 18, Block 93, Lot Zero, that has been abandoned or not used for a period of more than two years. The hearing resumed?
Good evening. I'm Attorney Christine Simons, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant, special permit 26, 2016, to renovate the non-conforming two-family that was not used for two years. Property address is 12 Park Street. The applicant is Professional Performance, Zachary Fleckner. For the record, the record owners of that property are Professional Performance and Zee Zhao as joint tenants. It's located in the RB zone, which of course allows by right two-family structures. The existing structure is a pre-existing non-conforming structure. Building Commissioner had determined that the use was discontinued for a period in excess of two years, and therefore issuance of a building permit would require a special permit be granted by the city council. The applicant is tax compliant on the subject property and also on other properties that he has ownership interest in. The joint owner, Zee Zhao, is also tax compliant and does not have any other ownership interest in other properties in the city. I believe a tax compliance letter was circulated to the city council today from the treasurer's office. And pursuant to 181-355, the non-conforming two-family structures may be renovated, providing that the alteration does not increase the non-conforming nature of the structure. Also, pursuant to 181-355 and 3555, there's no work that's proposed that will otherwise increase the non-conforming nature or the footprint of the structure. Pursuant to 181-356, it allows the city council to grant a special permit authorizing the rehabilitation, occupancy, and use of a non-conforming structure that has not been used for more than two years, provided that the building is structurally sound and appropriate for renovation. It submitted that the building is structurally sound and that there are appropriate plans for the renovation of this property. Subsequent to the submission of the original application for the special permit, Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend in favor of the applicant subject to providing four parking spaces on the site and contingent upon submission to the city council of a plan showing the location of those parking spaces and rehab of the parking surface prior to occupancy. As mentioned earlier, the treasurer has issued the letter of compliance, tax compliance, today. And it submitted that the applicant has committed or complied with all requirements for the granting of the special permit, and it's also further submitted that it is in the best interest of the surrounding neighborhood as well as the city to renovate the properties such that it can be made suitable for occupancy. And a request is hereby made that the application for the special permit be granted.
Thank you. We have questions and comments from councilors. Councilor Boeschman?
I was up there in 12 Park Street. Who started the work up there without the special permit? Looks like they tore the back of the housing apart.
Right. What happened was initially, one of the co-owners went to the city and requested a permit for a demolition permit. That demolition permit was granted. However, what happened is after the work had begun, it came to the attention of the building commissioner's office that we had the two...the pre-existing non-conforming status, so a cease and desist was issued, and it was made known to the applicant that he needed to come to city council in order to get the special permit.
Now, I understand that the area is classified B, and it's got a lot of multifamilies. And I believe, if I'm not right, and the city solicitor can back us up on this, that we have a right to say, "If we want a single family here, we can do that, ma'am." Right? Am I right, sir?
You can allow a special permit and place conditions on that. And if that's one of the conditions that you desire us to place, you can do that.
My understanding is, however, that in the RB district that it's located, that pursuant to the allowed uses, that a two-family is permitted as of right.
My understanding is that they can issue a special permit, and they can attach conditions to the issuance of that permit. Specifically, if they make a determination that the structure have an architectural or other features that is deemed appropriate for rehabilitation, and if they make that finding, they can make a special permit, and then the conditions apply.
Right.
So they could provide other conditions.
Okay.
A host of conditions.
And the property is currently, or was previously, used as a two-family, so they're really looking to simply continue that pre-existing non-conforming use as the two-family.
And according to the record of the assessors' office back in the nineties, early nineties, it was rated as a single family.
I'd have to review that. I don't have that information. I'm just looking at what I was reviewing most recently and how the property was otherwise transferred and marketed and referenced as a two-family, but I take your word for it. I haven't been able to verify that.
It's not that we're trying to give people a hard time when they come in front of the council on these special permits, but the people of Pittsburgh have spoken, and they're tired of rundown neighborhoods, and they want better. They want better quality of life in their neighborhoods. And I'm a firm believer, ma'am, that the core of a city is your neighborhoods. And if you have strong neighborhoods, you have a strong city. When you have weak neighborhoods, you have a weak city. And this is why I'm very ticklish of what goes on, and I try to be very outspoken. And I'm headed towards a single family, not a two-family in that neighborhood, because it's too congested. That's what I'm heading for.
Councilor Green.
I would like to know why the five other properties that this particular company represents, why did they take so long in paying and becoming tax compliant?
They ran into some financial difficulties and have since rectified that situation. But they've rehabbed several properties in the city and marketing those properties. Some have taken longer to sell, so it did result in a financial hardship.
Thank you.
Councilor Donnelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can you tell me how many square feet of land the house sits on?
Just slightly in excess of 5,000. I think it's 5,662.8.
And do you know what the requirement is for two-family in the city?
It's 10,000 in that RB zone.
And as Counselor Boeschman just said, it was assessed as a one-family some years ago. And as Ellen DeGioio spoke about historical sections of the city, and we know there's not a historical district, but that could be a really neat little single-family neighborhood if more of these houses were done. There appears to be another one that's going to be coming in in a few years, too. What's the square footage of the units?
The square footage, I believe, is just in excess, it will be in excess of 2,000 square feet.
2,000 each?
No, in total. It's going to be in excess of 2,000.
There'll be 2,000 square foot in the building?
In excess of 2,000. I don't have the exact square footage, actually. I could get that.
And parking spaces?
Four. Zach could speak.
So just for the record, if you could state your name and address, please.
Zachary Fleckner. Yeah, the plan is to make the two-family both side of both apartments with at least three bedrooms, so that way it can be a more family-oriented situation. Instead of...like, we don't manage a lot of buildings and deal with a lot of properties in town, and what we find is that ones and even small two-bedrooms become very transient people. They don't really stay very long. So you talk about building a community. What our idea is, is to get three bedrooms into the property so it's more family-oriented, so that way they'll stay much longer. They tend to stay...most of our tenants tend to stay at least two to three years, longer than single bedrooms or even small two-bedroom apartments.
So what do you think the tax...when it's all finished, what do you think the tax bill will be for that building?
I...to be honest, I don't know.
So how many children you think would be living there?
Could be three to four. I mean, you're talking three bedrooms, so you're probably talking at least...
So when we're talking about residential building, if the tax bill's $3,000 and you have four children and $6,000 apiece, how do you figure that kind of residential building is good for the city?
Especially in a smaller area like that, I've found that two-families evaluate higher than single families. So we've been able to take, like, buildings that weren't producing, at least tax-wise, and make them better. I've been able to sell two-families higher than I've been able to sell single families. Even on Canton Street, Nutting Street, I've sold single families that came out gorgeous from talking granite countertops, backsplashes, the whole nine yards, and they would only sell for approximately 140, 150. Two-families, we just did a...we just took one on Pratt Road, 352 Pratt, was on the condemned list. I was able to buy it just as that transition was going to take over. We renovated that and just sold that for 180,000.
Well, I think zoning's supposed to protect the city. You're looking at your, as a developer's, best interests. I just don't understand where the...where there's economic benefit for the city when you can make a little bit more money yourself and everything that's there costs the city money.
Wouldn't it be appraised higher? I mean, if I'm selling them higher, wouldn't it be appraised higher, which would mean more taxes? As well as even...and also, I'm just going to put this...if it's a same-sized building and I make a three or four-bedroom single family, then there's still going to be three, possibly four children, living in the same building? I mean...
It'd be substantially...my opinion, it'd be substantially better to be a single family, because that's where the meter of the city is, not the multifamilies.
Yeah. I understand.
Councilor Jeanette Ali.
Couple of weeks ago, I was critical about the taxes owed on these properties, not just the other properties this person is responsible for. It was stated earlier that, well, now we've taken care of it. Funny how they're taken care of after we get this permit request. I was very critical a few weeks ago, because I asked myself, "Why did it take until this point for the representatives to go to the treasurer's office, make good on some of the properties, and have a tax payment on the others?" Makes me wonder, if this came...this didn't come before us, those taxes would still be owed. Because I think we made it quite clear at the last meeting, at least I did, that I wouldn't even consider this without the taxes paid. I'm glad that they're paid, and I'm glad that the treasurer has certified tax compliance, but I'm a little upset with the fact and a little skeptical as to the motives behind paying them, because if we didn't have this permit request, you might understand me thinking, "That's the only reason why they got paid." And is there going to be delinquency going forward after this whole process is done?
I could actually comment on that. The payment was delayed. There was another property that the applicant had on the market for sale and under... There was another property that the applicant had on the market for sale and under contract that didn't convey until most recently, so the money to satisfy some of those taxes came from that conveyance, which got delayed.
And I'm not, I'm not saying that, like, I didn't owe the taxes and that I shouldn't have the taxes paid off. I'm not saying that at all. Like, we did run into a very serious hardship, and I, I thought we weren't going to make it for a portion of time there. Last winter that we had, we set that record, and it almost buried me. We had just expanded into our new shop, and we almost got destroyed. We're battling back, and we have a very solid plan in place to get everything caught up, not just the taxes, but every, you know, everything that we, that we incurred over that time period. And it was on our plan, and still is on our plan, to get that caught up, everything, by the end of the summer. I need the summertime, obviously, with the construction timeframe. That's where I can make more of my money. I can, you know, the wintertime tends to be a lot slower and a little harder.
You, you could understand why I would feel that way. I, I'm not discounting that there may be hardships. I know people fall in hard times. I am not insinuating anything, but it is a little, it was a little concerning that, from where I sit, they're owed, and then we get this permit, we make some comments, and then all of a sudden, the next week, we get a certificate that they're paid. It just, I mean, we did...
I wouldn't have been able to pay them all up and been able to try to do what I've been doing, you know what I mean, maybe without this permit pushing it that, that far, you know what I mean? It would have taken maybe a couple more months, but I would have been able to get there. And like I said, my overall plan is to be by the end of the summer, become 100% caught up on everything and paid off and full of everything.
So, so...
I don't want to just take this payment plan and say, okay, I'll just pay this payment plan and, and move on.
Well, the good, the good news is, you're, you're up to date, so, I mean, better, better late than never. However, I understand the concerns, because I've visited that area. It's a very thickly settled area. I don't even know how the people who live there currently can move around in there.
There, yeah.
It's very tight.
Really got a dumpster there.
So, how many people, or how many cars do you plan on having at this place? How many, how many spaces for parking would this place accommodate?
Well, we've talked about, we could, I mean, expand the parking up top. There's two, there's two different sides of the parking. On either side of the building, there's, there's parking for both. There's a couple of trees that could be taken down. We could expand the parking backwards to make it probably fit at least three or four cars per, per side. I don't, I'm not looking to get three or four cars each side put up onto that spot. I don't want to increase all that parking unless I really have to, to encourage that, because doing, you know, you don't, you just don't want to encourage that. I understand.
Are there multifamily dwellings in that cul-de-sac, in that, I, I know there were a few single-family homes, but in that, in that Park Street cul-de-sac, not, not off of Main Street, when you drive up the road, and there's the, the rotary, I'll call it, it's a big circle, I believe they're all single-family homes. So my concern is the congestion. And like some of the councilors have stated, I am more inclined to be favorable to a single-family residence, because I cannot visually see how that is not going to strain the other residents in that area with three or four, maybe even five cars in that spot. I mean, it's just a, it's just a general concern I have. We're putting in a multifamily dwelling in a very tight location where there are only single-family homes around it. And it's hard for me to, it's hard for me to envision that without actually seeing it done, but, you know, obviously, I'm not sure yet if that's what I want to do. But I'd be more amenable to the single-family structure. That's just how I feel. Thank you.
Counselor Joseph.
I just, my comment is, I live in a fairly dense neighborhood. The majority of my neighborhood is a mixture of single-family and two-family, and the majority of those are two-family homes. I would much rather have somebody rehabbing and repairing and occupying a home than have a vacant home. Okay? I've seen enough of the, we've had, we've gone through enough times here in Pittsburgh with vacant homes that have deteriorated because of bank problems and things like that. Now people are starting to take an interest in Pittsburgh, because it is an investment spot. Our property values are low, but they're fixing up the houses. Hopefully, you'll fix it up in a quality way. People are getting the parking off of the street and being, putting, they're being made to put the parking on their property. I, I still say, moving forward and investing in Pittsburgh, I thank you for doing it, and I hope we continue to get people to do that. Because, I mean, we've been going on for years and years about how our city is deteriorating because of empty buildings and abandoned buildings, and I've been surrounded by abandoned buildings over the last couple of years. And now I'm seeing the neighborhood come back to revitalize. And I see people with three families, families with three kids, you know, three bedrooms, staying there for a longer period of time, kids running around the neighborhood. I, I'm sorry, but I'd rather see a home fixed up, put back on the tax roll, and have somebody occupy it than continue to have it vacant and have us here talk about congestion. Maybe everybody should have a one, a single-family home, but I just don't think that's going to happen here in the city of Pittsburgh. So continue, I, I support what you're doing, and I hope that you do a quality job.
Counselor Beazel.
Thank you. I mean, my only concern with, with a lot of these is the parking, and, and I know that we normally hear it after the fact, so what ends up happening is, you may eventually sell this property. I just looked online, looks like it was sold for like 43,000. You're going to flip it, you're probably going to turn around and sell it, the next person comes in, they're going to rent it out and not tell the people moving in how many parking spaces there should be. Next thing you know, the City Council gets a phone call, there's 30 cars on my street, can you do something about it? I turn around, try to put a petition in, and everyone here yells at me, because they're putting a petition in. So really, I think the parking is, is a big issue, and it's something that needs to be resolved, not only for the people living there, but the people in the neighborhood. It's something that you have to take in consideration. I surely am not in favor, I don't like to see houses vacant, but in the same token, a lot of times when we get these petitions, it's a good chance to look at the area and say, is there something we can do else with these homes to improve the area? Instead of just chomping at the bit and saying, okay, gone home, move in, we don't want the house to be vacant, so we don't really care what you do with it, just make sure it looks pretty. So that's really what our concern is. And I noticed that they did ask on there, the Planning Board, to provide four parking spaces on the site. I'm sure the Building Commissioner will be up to review that. I'm sure he'll be looking at it. My only, my only point is, if you're going to make it three bedrooms, I, I just know that there's going to be more than two people moving in there. There's going to be three people at six cars, four parking spaces might not be enough. And I just can see it being, the neighborhood getting upset that now they've got a lot of people there. So I fully appreciate what you're doing, but you need to understand what our concerns are, too. It sounds like you are building in Pittsburgh, that you're doing different things. These are things that you need to take into consideration when you're doing these projects, that whatever you do, it comes back to us in one way or another. So, thank you.
Counselor Boishman.
I don't want the building empty. But if we're going to raise the property value in that area, we've got to take the congestion away from the area. You talked about Pratt Road. That's my neighborhood, and I'm your counselor. You got more money for your property for one reason. It's a good, quality area. That's why you got it. The homes are upkeep, the land, you drive up there, you're safe, you're not congested. You can move. You're not like here, when I spray my eyes and I hit Counselor Donnelly in the head over here. When you have an area where everybody's packed in like sardines, you do not get good, quality people. They don't care. I know. You can see it sometime in Clegorn when you're in there. Like sardines, they don't care in some of these multifamilies. I'm not going to vote for the two-family. I'm telling you right now, I'm going to go for a single-family, and I'm going to make a motion that we make this a single-family. Because it'll raise the value, it'll get you more money, and it'll be a better neighborhood. That's how I feel about the thing.
Counselor Green.
How long have you owned 12 Park Street?
We bought it about a year and probably three months ago, I think.
And what was your vision when you, in particular, when you bought this property? What did you envision for it?
To, to make it, to make the, the undersized apartments, because when we went in there, they were really congested apartments. So one of them was a one-bedroom, looks like they had shoved a couple of bedrooms in random areas. We wanted to open concept it, renovate the whole property, same thing, bring it back up to, you know, what we do with all the properties, we want to bring it back up to the quality that we sell the properties at, and we keep a lot, too. We manage and own a lot ourselves. And what we try to do is, we always try to do all the, the major systems, the electrical, the plumbing, the roofs, the structure, make sure all that's sound first, and then we move inside, and we do all the accessories after that. We try to update them with granite, nice cabinets, tile floors, the whole nine, you know, everything that we possibly can do to it. Our vision is just to bring back dilapidated properties back to life. I mean, that's, that's, that's all we ever try to do. We'll buy the worst property on the street, and we just, we want to make it better. That's our entire goal. That's our whole model. We've been doing it in Pittsburgh now for about eight years, nine years.
Okay. And knowing that, would you say the majority of your business, then, is from selling and flipping? Or selling and renting, and are you the property managers of all these other properties?
We, I don't know what exactly, which properties it is.
I have Roll, I have Rollstone Street, Chester Street, West Street, Oak Hill Road.
Yeah, Oak Hill Road.
Right.
Yeah, Oak Hill Road is, is where I live. Yeah. Is that, talking of 226 Oak Hill or 122?
122.
122 is the shop, I'm sorry. So that's our, that's our new office. That's what we bought last year. 26 West is my personal building. It's bought my company's name, but yes, that one, we, that was a hold, that one, I'm sure you probably know the seller, whatever. We bought that, that had a lot of issues with the building department when we bought it. There had been some major renovations done to it that weren't supposed to be done. We rectified those, fixed the inside. We've been able to, we've been able to keep, at least two out of the three apartments have been running perfectly. There's one apartment that had been a little challenging. We've been trying to deal with that through many different avenues. And then the goal this year is to finish the outside. And if you can, if you've seen it, you see the color samples on the side. That's the goal this year, is to paint the outside.
I didn't really know what all the colors were. I, I didn't know what was actually happening there, so...
Yes, of course. We were, we weren't sure exactly which color we wanted to do. So, yeah, so the main thing, number one, obviously, is to get the inside of the building up and running properly with all the proper systems, safety-wise, as well as, I mean, we, we added the, the backup battery lights, exit signs, handrails, the whole nine yards. We try to make sure everything's safe and, and desirable for our tenants. And then, from there, we continue to expand over a length of period, you know, further renovations on it, like the outside, roofs, whatever else, you know, whatever else needs to be done. But we'll schedule those out for deferred maintenance, depending on what, what is what. And what we're allowed to do, you know, what kind of the budget allows us at the beginning, because we're all, you know, obviously, we're all, when we finance these, a lot of these have to be cash deals. They can't be, you know, banks won't finance us on most of these, because most of them are too far gone. So we end up having to finance these with cash deals, and we tend to stay only into those properties for about 65 to 70% of what they were after they're repaired, to keep our investors safe. And for a long time, I wasn't, we weren't really, we, we only could be into it for about 100 to 110,000 dollars in, in Pittsburgh, per property. And that's because, for a long time, our resale values, our ARVs, were only around 150 to 160. Over the last two years, I've seen them go up, and we've been a part of a lot of them going up. I've even seen four families sell for over 200,000 now. That was amazing. And that's been able to drive our comps up as well. So we've been able to get more of a budget to do further rehabs, such as Pratt Road. Pratt was one that we definitely wanted to push as far as we could because of the area. It was already, the area was already nice enough, and, and we, we totally renovated that thing 100% throughout. I mean, that was on the condemned list when we bought it.
All right. Thank you.
Counselor Caddy.
I'm not sure if we really discussed this earlier from anybody, but Park Street is a very narrow street. And I, I heard Counselor Jeanette Tally mention a cul-de-sac, but I don't think there's a cul-de-sac. I think it's a dead end.
It's a dead end, yeah.
And if you've only owned it for a year, I don't think you've seen what a major snowstorm does to that street. There's nowhere to put snow. Back in Clegorn years ago, we tore, city tore a lot of apartment buildings down and built single-family homes, and they basically resurrected a very crime-stricken neighborhood. I can't see how a two-family on that street is going to benefit anybody that lives there. It's already congested, it's narrow. I think money well-spent would be for you to bring it back to a single-family, so it matches the, the neighborhood. I think that you would benefit from it better. I think this is one of those where you may think that turning it into a two-family would be a good thing, but I don't think it would be. I think a single-family would fit very nicely in that area.
Counselor... If I could.
Please.
Me? I mean, that's like, we're definitely, I mean, a single-family is better than nothing, you know what I mean? So we're definitely interested in doing what's better for the city. So if everybody, you know, or a majority of everybody feels that a single-family is the way to go, then, again, I'm not opposed to that. You know, we, we're, we're always looking at how to put parking in, like Canton Street, we did 64 Canton. There was no parking whatsoever for that building at all. We, we dug out the road, you know, dug out the side of the hill, we added parking, we allowed that to happen. I, I owned property in Pittsburgh when I first moved down here that didn't have parking. I know how much of, of, of an issue that is. I mean, I, I, I owned 50 Allen Place for a little while. That had no parking whatsoever, and there was a lot of tran, yeah, exactly. And that was back before Waverly got over there, so it was really bad. And there was, you know, the transient was bad, the congestion was bad, Allen's another tight spot, so, I mean, we're, we're here to work with the city and work with you guys to help develop my town as well. I mean, I live here, too. It's my town as well. So my, our goal in town here is to help develop and re, you know, bring back Pittsburgh to where it was. From when I first got here to what I see it as now, I think there's been a lot of improvement. I mean, I have seen Clegorn area go from, literally, while I'm fixing apartment buildings, seeing people standing on the side of the street dealing drugs, so that doesn't happen anymore. I mean, they, if they're doing it, they're hiding it now, at least. So, I mean, I, I think, I think that, you know, the, the way the city's going is in the proper direction. I think it's good. So, I mean, a lot of strong feeling about making that back a single-family. I'm not openly opposed to that. I mean, I'm...
Counselor Joseph.
I guess I wanted to say I have a problem with the council saying I don't live in a quality neighborhood. And then my other thing is, there isn't a single two, there isn't a single three, two-family in my neighborhood that has more than three cars. Okay? And that, all of the single families have two cars as well. So, I mean, they're only adding one car. But I would rather listen to the neighbors and see what they have for a comment before I comment any further.
Counselor Beazel.
Thank you. So, I mean, basically, what I'm hearing is, you know, and this is where we're talking about this neighborhood and the impact that it has, and I just want to let you know that I respect for you just went up quite a bit. Anybody that can sit there and say, I'm willing to listen to what the city and the residents have to say, and then react to that, that's pretty impressive. So I want to thank you for that, because there's a lot of people that come before us, and it's either they get what they want or they leave. And to hear you say that you're willing to listen to the residents and listening to what some of the city councils are saying, I think that that is a great thing, and I want to thank you for that.
Counselor Donnelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just think that by enforcing this two-year rule, it brings to the, brings to the surface some of the problems, some of the big problems that we have in Pittsburgh. When you address them one at a time, it, it doesn't seem that bad. But here's an opportunity to take our zoning into consideration. It's slightly over 5,000 square feet. In our zoning, if you want to put an infill building, an infill single-family, it's allowed. It requires ten thousand square feet for a two-family. As Counselor Boishman said, why try to put more sardines in a sardine can? It's a nice little old historic neighborhood. This is an opportunity to tell the developer, and you're looking at the petitioner, please, when you, when people come in about doing homes, business is over, that's the petitioner. Once the building is up, it's going to be there long after the petitioner is gone. They could sell it next week, next month, next year, but the neighbors live with it. This is an opportunity for whether it's the zoning board, the planning board, or the city council, to tell people in our best interests, in Pittsburgh's best interest, we need more single families. If we didn't have, when you say multifamilies, there are very few upscale multifamilies in the city of Pittsburgh. So most people's idea of a multifamily is a three-decker. But in some communities, multifamilies, they could be worth a million dollars, paying ten, ten, twenty thousand dollars a month. We don't have any like that here. And I, I think it's an opportunity to raise our standards, ask for more. I don't think we have to settle. People are paying so little to buy property in this, in this city, it's time that we ask, we want more singles. And I know Counselor Joseph and I had a discussion many years, and it was a little bit of misunderstanding of what my idea of congestion was. He's talked about his neighbor being congested. It's not congested like this, and they're mostly small houses, but it's extremely congested. The congestion I was referring to, most of our problems, most of our expenses, most of our resources go to the poorest neighborhoods, and the best neighborhoods contribute the most money and demand the least amount of services. So this is why I think that it's an opportunity, we need a five thousand square foot lot, there should no way be a two-family on that. If we have an opportunity, he owns it, they own it, somebody owns it, forget who the petitioner is. If they're gonna, if they own it, they're gonna fix it, and they're working for their best interest, not necessarily the neighborhood's best interest or the city's best interest. So if I had my way, there'd be a lot more singles and a lot less doubles. And it, it may, for me, in the seventies and the eighties, up until around nineteen ninety, I thought more apartments, better. But I realized it's better for the, for the petitioner, not for the city, and not for the neighborhood.
Just to say one thing that I've noticed, um, that a lot of the two-families that we sell are for people who are going to put like their parents in there or fa-, other family members in there. And we specifically have a lot of people that come asking that, that direct question. So don't, I mean, obviously judge it per, per incident and per situation as far as the congestion and, and the lot itself and that location, but don't undermine the two-families because a lot of those, like I said, stay within families themselves, and both sides are, it's like, it's a, it's just a large single family for most of them, at least most of the ones I sell.
Mr. President.
Counselor Donnelly.
I don't know if it's protocol or not, but we have the chief assessor in the room, who is also happens to be a realtor. So if anyone has some questions from a professional perspective, he's there.
Counselor, unless you have a specific question directed for the chief assessor, I'd, I'd rather not introduce another.
I just want people to know, you know, that, that, the residential parts of taxes, single families pay the majority of the taxes. Those are the neighborhoods that demand the least amount of services, and the multifamilies but pay proportionately less and demand the most services. And you named, you named the neighborhood, the same ones that have been CDBG for the last forty-plus years, it's the same situation. It's an opportunity for the council, the city, to raise our standards, to raise the bar, and have developers that are coming in here realizing, we're not going to be pushovers. We're going to do what's best for the neighborhood and best for the city. Thank you.
When I look at, um, special permits, I always go back to, it's, uh, 181-3561 in the building code, um, which states to be eligible for a special permit, the structure must have architectural or other features deemed appropriate for rehabilitation by the city council. Uh, this is one that I always stick to, it's a, um, uh, in some, in some cases, it's really the only question, um, that we have to answer is, uh, are there architectural or other features that will deem this appropriate, uh, for us to grant a special permit? So I look at this, this building, and I look at the neighborhood and say, um, are there architectural features enough to deem it appropriate for saving as a two-family in a, what I would classify as a very claustrophobic, um, uh, setting that, that at times could probably warrant a five-point turn to get in and out? Um, I have a hard time looking at that and saying, that's a structure worth saving for, uh, for a two-family and one that could potentially, uh, cause more congestion and, um, and headaches in the area. But however, I do look at this and say, uh, as a one-family, the architecture might be such, uh, that it's worth saving for, uh, for a one-family, um, and it could become a betterment and an anchor, um, to that neighborhood to, to help, um, uh, kind of allow more breathing room in that, in that community, um, uh, and, uh, not add further parking or congestion issues, um, to that neighborhood. Thank you. That said, unless we have any further questions or comments by counselors, I'll ask if there's anyone here wishing to speak in favor of the petition. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to the petition? Thank you very much. We have, uh, we have some, some people from the public who wish to, uh, address, uh, the opposition to this petition. Uh, sir, if you could please come forward, uh, state your name and address for the record. Good evening.
Good evening. Ron Ekstrom, uh, live at Eight Park Street, uh, right in the neighborhood. A, a lot of what I'm, I'm actually hearing here, I, I guess gives me less angst about what might get done because I hear a lot of support. We actually saw you driving down the street the other week and we couldn't get outside to, to catch you quick enough. Definitely as a two-family, it's, it's a real issue. And, you know, and I cited a bunch of different, uh, section, chapter verses, talking about offsets and things like that. Um, and I brought some pictures as well, um, if, if people would like to see, because I, I know some have driven by, some haven't, that, that might be helpful. But there's a real space issue at that particular building. Um, you know, the non-conforming permit, uh, the special use permit would be fine, except when you see pictures of the rear of the building and there's literally a three-foot gap between the building and the property line. I've been there for eleven and a half years, and we've watched dogs be chained to the front yard, uh, kids allowed to just roam loose in the street because there is nowhere for a family to actually reside, play, and be safe in that community. They, you know, and everybody here, again, knows the street and the tightness, and when your only solution is they play in the street, they play in the driveway, or they play in the neighbor's driveway, uh, that's not conducive to a safe neighborhood or a better neighborhood, and definitely to the point of bringing in poor quality people into that kind of rental situation. Um, part of, I think, our being here today is the, really the potential distrust of what may take place there, um, even regardless of what gets ruled on here tonight. And part of that is just, uh, we've watched this property three times now get shut down for work on it, and, and not all from, from Zachary, but with three times, people have attempted to do work, major renovations, city shuts them down. Uh, somewhere last year, same thing, uh, you drove by the house and saw that half the house is cut off. That was done with no permit, no nothing, because we talked to the city ourself, and the city said, nobody ever contacted us about demolition or anything. So we have a concern about that, that if you're going to go in the middle of the night, cut houses in half, start having stuff delivered to do work without the city having any knowledge of it. You know, if that didn't get done, this thing would already be a two-family, three bedrooms each, uh, nothing but pavement everywhere, no yard, and we would have multiple cars, not three cars, because we, I've lived there for eleven and a half years. We've watched as many as six, seven vehicles be at that place. I've been there for eleven and a half. It was an illegal two-bedroom at that, or two-family at that time, uh, neighbor that's here as well, that I'm sure will speak, will, who's lived there his whole life, will tell you, it was only a single family. And, and previous owners have illegally created this two-family situation. And, and the neighborhood just cannot support that from streets, parking, or anything. You've got pavement on one side of the building that literally is up to the edge of the building, you know, the, so there's a whole recess issue there. There's no yard. Um, there's, someone from the city came in when the house got cut in half, and all the doors were left open, windows were broken out, there were neighborhood kids, obviously, that would be sort of going onto the property, because kids like to poke around, look in empty houses, things like that. Um, the, somebody from the city has drawn huge red X's on particular walls that are structurally not sound. Uh, there's a second floor beam that's rotted out, and, and the second floor is drooping down. This is not a house that can be saved, in my opinion. Now, I'm not a builder, I've owned a lot of real estate in my day, um, and, and I don't, I don't flip things like that when I do them, um, and we just don't trust that that's going to be done. To the extent that my wife and I literally met Zach the one day when he was boarding up the house, and there was a dumpster piled miles high with trash that had been there for months, we had a promise that that dumpster would be removed that particular Friday, which was a few months ago. Never, it never got removed until just a couple, literally days before the last hearing, and still what resides out there, uh, still what resides out there is skids, mattresses, tires, um, still, just litter the property. So I, I've owned lots of apartments, I've invested a lot like that. I do not begrudge anybody to be making a living improving a property. Single family, I am not against by any stretch. Two-family, i-, I can't support. But in, in either case, I think that there's, you know, this particular person has tried to do a lot of things outside of the rules of the city, and I would want to make sure that the city follows through, and if it's a single-family plan, I'm in favor of that because I'm not going to begrudge somebody to take that property and do something with it. But it's got to be done right, there's got to be proper setbacks, so there's a yard. You can't make a single-family home and it's just paved from head to toe, and there's no yard, there's no place for a kid, a pet, or anything like that. So I, I would hope that those things would be incorporated into whatever plans, and I think that would be beneficial for our little community back there.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak in opposition to the petition? Sir, please come forward. If you could please state your name and address for the record.
My name is David Simons, I live at Nine Park Street, and, uh, I've lived there for well over sixty-two years. And a couple of the counselors, first of all, I want to, how many of you have been up there to look at this, because you knew it was on the agenda? Do you go and inspect these, uh, houses and things that, like, you have it? I know you have, he has, and you have. You've been up there. It's unbelievably tight. There is no sidewalks, you cannot put sidewalks there. The road goes right up to our houses. I mean, literally to the houses. There is no way you can park on the street. Nobody, you just can't. If someone parks on the street, none of us can get on or off. We have to go knocking on doors, get people to move their cars, and then we can come and go. It's, it's, uh, never been an apartment house on that street. That was a single-family house the whole time I've ever lived there since twelve years old. Couple of old women lived there, elderly, and, uh, when they died, the house was bought numerous times, and it had been secretly, not through the city, turned into somewhat of a two-apartment complex. And, and it's, it's tight in there. Well, right now, it's not tight because there's no roof, there's no walls, so it's not tight at all, but there is no way you can put two-family on that street. No way. It, it would be insane. And number two, the only fire hydrant we have on the street doesn't work. It hasn't worked in years. They said if we have a fire, Main Street will take care of it, but that's another issue. So we have six houses on that street, we're all single-family, and we're all, you know, pay our taxes, we all own our own homes. There's been nothing but problems on that property through the years. I was going to have the police bang out a report. We've had stabbings, gunfights, drug raids. It's just insane. I, that's probably got nothing to do with somebody that wants to present something to the future. But we have to live with these in our, with this in our minds, and there's no way we want to see a two-family there. The other people on the street couldn't be here tonight, Mr. Gonzalez is, is an elderly person, he's sick, people up the street work numerous hours a day, they can't make it. Me, myself and Ron are here. But for you people that haven't, as counselors that haven't been up that street, take yourself a little trip, and you're in for a surprise. But we're only asking that, we have no objection to single-family, because we're all single families anyway. All, all houses on the street are single-family homes. That would be the only structure that would be a two-family, and, and as Ron said, take a ride over there, there's, there's no room, there's no room. You've got four cars parking, you have company, you have visitors, where are they going to go? In the past, they just left their cars in the middle of the road. We've, uh, asked to have no parking signs, at least on one side of the street. They were put up years ago. We had a neighbor that took upon himself for his business to cut the signs down, and they disappeared, and, and that's what happened there. But, uh, if, if the few of you, I don't know where this is going tonight, but the few of you that have not been up to that street, because we're not exaggerating, take a ride, take a look, and tell me if you would want to live in your single-family house on that street with a two-family. No way. Thank you for your time. This is the second time we've been here. The last, first time we came, the representatives never showed. And the other thing, he talks about being neighborly, there's been nobody neighborly. We, we've been out asking questions from these people, you know, trying to get what's going on. And the closest I got was a few weeks ago when somebody came by to remove some more material. I asked him, I said, "It would be nice if this was all cleaned up." And my answer was, "Yeah, wouldn't it?" And he got in his truck and drove off. And what's, what's that do for, for relationships with the people on the street? Nothing. And, and if this is what we can expect on, on a flip, and they made it quite clear, just a couple of gentlemen in suits, "Yeah, we're going to buy it and flip it." Just cold, "We're going to buy it and flip it." Money, money, money. They don't care about the neighbors. They don't give a darn about us. And, and actually, everybody on our street are elderly people, except for Ron. But the rest of us are all over sixties, are retired, we're there all day long, we see everything, we hear everything, and it's, uh, kind of very upsetting to think that they would want to put a two-family apartment on that street. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And, uh, we'll, we'll confirm to make sure that water hydrant on, on Park Street is on the list to be repaired.
Uh, the water department people informed me it would be a hundred thousand dollars to do the pipes on that street. And my water pressure is so low, my, I'm going to bring you a bag of water filters that'll blow your mind, because if you will drink this stuff, I'll give you a thousand dollars. I haven't drank City of Pittsburgh water since nineteen eighty-two.
I'll take that bet.
I'm, I'm serious.
That's a, that's a topic for the other, for, uh, that we had, uh, two, two weeks ago, but certainly, uh, I'll, I'll follow up.
Really, I could bring you samples that would, you would say insane.
See your water if you drink.
Thank you, sir.
I understand, all us taxpayers understand the problems, the time it's going to take to resolve them, the money involved, but this can't go on forever, you know, it just can't. And, uh, good luck to everybody, and Mr. Donnelly, and, and your people doing a wonderful job, and, uh, keep at it.
Thank you, sir.
Hopefully, we won't have to come back and hem and haw. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the petition? If all has been heard, declare the hearing closed. Matter is now before the council.
Motion to approve 2616, providing it's reverted back to a single-family home and, uh, up to, uh, building standards with a building inspector.
I have a motion in second.
Can you repeat the motion, please?
I have a motion in second to approve, um, 2616, provided that it be a one-family residence brought up to current building standards. Is that correct, Counselor Caddy? Uh, speaking to the motion, Counselor Boishman.
On the motion? I have no problem with Counselor Caddy said.
What's that?
It needs a second.
I, we, we got a second.
I got no problem with C-, uh, Counselor Caddy said, as long as, we also put in it that, as long as his taxes are being paid on the arrangements that he made.
I have a motion in second on the floor. Anyone else wishing to speak to the motion? All those and, Counselor Tran.
From, from listening to the comments from the Butters, uh, one of the concerns that I have, and I'd like the counselors to, um, entertain and add as, as a, a condition as well, is to set a timeline to have all those, um, trash around the building removed as soon as possible.
A standard condition in the zoning board would be to establish a timeframe for construction, including removal of construction.
Uh, the city solicitor has some official legal language. Okay. That, that's amenable to your.
It is.
Would you please state that for?
The standard condition that we would use on the zoning board would be to set a timeline for construction, which would be completed only upon the removal of the, all the construction to break.
And what's the timeline for this to come before the, uh, the zoning board?
Well, no, this wouldn't come before the zoning board. This would just go, this would go, uh, this is a special permit that this body would be issuing, that it would set its own condition. Typically, we might inquire as to the anticipation. Typically, we might inquire as to the anticipation of their expected timeframe, if the matter was still open.
So, we don't know when the zoning board will be setting those conditions to remove the, those, the trash around the building, so that can, that can happen a year from now, maybe two years from now, we don't know, but we can set that as a condition.
I may mispoke, if I can just restate that. This body will set all the conditions, and this petition will not be viewed by the zoning board. Conditions set by this body might be enforced by the building department in connection with its zoning enforcement. So, if we were to set a condition here at the city council, it would be to have construction completed within a certain period of time, which would include the removal of all construction debris. And perhaps one year would be an appropriate timeframe, perhaps a shorter timeframe would be appropriate, and we typically would inquire from the petitioner as to their anticipated construction timeframe.
I would hate to see, to have the Butters see those mattresses for another year.
Sure.
So, there has to be something for us to not wait for those conditions to come forth and have them.
The council could put the matter on for a review, council could put the matter on for a review for six months, to review the status of the construction and the quality of the, of the debris.
Maybe, maybe it's, maybe we can make it a notice to the petitioner who is right now, and ask the petitioner to remove all those debris around the building.
Yeah, if, I mean, if we can, if we're going to be able to start working on the property, the hardest part about a vacant property is that, no matter how many times we clean it up, people throw stuff there all the time. So, I know he's shaking his head, and that's fine, but the dumpster, we actually packed down three different times.
Can I inject something? I watched your.
Gentlemen, we're currently past the time for, the public hearing is now closed, as a matter for deliberation by council.
Could I change my motion, Mr. President?
Council Tran, you still have the floor, are you all set?
I think the petitioner just agreed that he will remove all the debris around the building. Thank you.
Change my motion to include that the building inspector does not give a permit until the property has been, all the trash has been cleaned in front of the property and the side of the property.
So, I have a motion and second to grant as a one-family, provided that it adhere to all current building code and.
Permit to issue after the building inspector determines that the debris on the property has been removed.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. Speaking to that motion, he said it much better than I would have. Speaking to the motion, Council Beazel.
Thank you, I was just going to recommend that we call the Board of Health and have them go up there and make sure that the property, anything on the property is not. Rodents or anything else can get into it, we do that, similar to other properties in the city, that if there's a amount of trash in the properties, we call the Board of Health and have them visit. You know, that's something that I personally will do in the morning, I'll send an email out.
The Director of Public Health is actually seated behind you, I believe he's taking a note, so.
Arguably noted.
Thank you.
If I could ask one question, Counselor, is the, is the debris visible from the street, or does?
Yeah, you can see it off.
Take a drive up there, look in the driveway, tires, mattresses.
Again, folks, the public hearing, the public hearing is closed, Council Beazel still has the floor, and it seems that we have the Director of Public Health who will be investigating the matter.
Thank you.
Council Green.
Again, only to the petitioner is that, how quickly are you going to start working or rehabbing this property?
Well, once we, it's this summer, I mean, once we know that we're going to be moving forward with it, I have a couple of projects in the middle right now, we just need to wrap those up, and it is on our list to get done right away.
Okay, thank you.
Council Boishman.
On the, on the conditions that we're setting for it, are we putting a condition on that his taxes will be paid as he's progressing? In other words, if the city treasurer doesn't get any money next month, does this special permit stop?
Counselor, I don't believe that is a current condition set forth by the, by the person who made the motion, no.
Can we put that as an amendment on that?
Any amendment could be placed within reason, but that's not the current motion on the floor. Council Donnelly.
Just speaking on some of the addendums or amendments to the motion, the rules and regulations, if we put them on, are not any more enforceable than the laws that we have in the city at the moment. The director's here, if he just put it on as highest priority, it's not going to be more effective or less effective whether they're on our condition or not, because those, we're not setting a new set of rules, he's only going to enforce the rules that are state laws or city laws now, so we don't need these extra conditions.
Council Joseph.
I believe we have a rule in the city also that no permits are issued until people are up to current with their taxes, so they won't be allowed to get a building permit to fix, to start rehab if they don't, if they're not current on their taxes. I believe that's a current ruling that we have in the city. If they want to go and get a building permit, they have to have proof that they're up on their taxes. Am I right?
I believe you're right, Counselor.
You have to rewrite, Counselor, but he made an arrangement.
Council Joseph, are you all set?
Yeah.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the motion? Council Green.
Yeah, I would like only to add a condition, that there be a construction timeframe put on the project, only because if you're going to start in the summer, I don't want it to drag up, you know, until eighteen months of you, you know, doing some work when you have money to put into it, and then hard times, and then you've had the stop and delay, so I'm giving you the opportunity to let me know what would be fair.
Counselor, there's a current motion on the floor, so unless the, those who made the motion are amenable to amending, we'd have, we'd have no further alterations.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a motion and second to adopt as a one-family home with the condition that it meet current building code and stipulations regarding trash and appearance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries, the permit has been granted with condition. Moving on to the agenda. Twenty-nine sixteen of Vincent Pous Terry, the Second Esquire, as an individual owning land to be affected by change or adoption at Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section five, to amend, Chapter one eighty-one, point nine-two of the Code of the City of Pittsburgh zoning, entitled Board of Appeals, by striking the words "At least one member shall be a member of the bar." Declare the hearing open. Ask the person or persons representing the petition to be seated at the table.
Do you want me to sit at the table?
No, no, you're fine.
So, just, this has been a trend for quite some time, we used to have an architect on this zoning board, that provision was struck. There was also the requirement for a civil engineer, that provision was struck. We have struggled recently, although we have recently just appointed an attorney to that board, we've identified it's not necessarily an easy task to find an attorney that has substantial zoning experience to sit on the board, because attorneys who live in the town are typically practicing before the board, or they have substantial zoning experience, that's how they're making their living, they're not particularly likely to serve on the board. The board is also serviced by two attorneys, both the solicitor and the Assistant City Solicitor, and will have plenty of access to legal counsel. Also, your current board, as it's currently composed, has at least over thirty years of zoning experience between two members, and it's going to open up an opportunity for us to select the best candidate moving forward, and that's why it was proposed. I think went through planning, and planning approved to city council.
That's correct.
So, it has been reviewed by planning as well. Any questions?
Council Green.
Yes, my question would be, do we? In your opinion, should we have those positions of the architect and the?
Civil engineer.
Civil engineer, should we have those represented on this board? If you're, if you're going to issue zoning guidelines and zoning permits and everything, should those, should those members be represented in this board?
No, and the answer, the reason why is, currently, we're anticipating, and not every petition comes in this way, that there would be an architectural, architectural drawing or rendition of the subject property, whether it be elevations that we're looking at, or if it's a civil engineer, give us a plot plan. It is a requirement that a certified plot plan be attached to any petition. Don't always get it, and typically, the board that I have seen will try to work out the issue when the certified plot plan is required for us, but have a full understanding, typically, we do send them out to get one.
Because zoning will now be the board that ultimately will take over for the special permits, correct?
That's correct, although, actually, I don't know what your body's going to do with that petition.
That's, that's currently with the council's whole committee.
Okay, thank you.
Council Donnelly.
Thank you, President. I think traditionally, back in the seventies and eighties, there was an attorney, and the attorney got paid a very small stipend, but the attorney took the notes and wrote all the decisions. And I don't know exactly what, when things changed around, but I was on from ninety-five to two thousand, and there were, I don't recall an attorney being there, there was a one member that may have become an attorney, but I don't know when that happened, and we, with Mike Alant as commissioner, we ended up having a person who, I don't know what her title was, but she took all the notes and wrote the decisions, and then sent them to the chair for review, and if there was a question, we could use the city's Assistant City Solicitor or the Solicitor. But we operated for a number of years with no attorney on the board, so I support the petition.
Mr. Solicitor.
Oh, and I would add, when I first got on the board, I had no zoning experience at all, and so even though I was the attorney on the board, I was there pretty much as a layperson, you know, analyzing cases, and following the lead of the senior members on that board.
Council Joseph.
I was on the two years following Council Donnelly, and there wasn't an attorney, and I'm just wondering if there's any correlation, I don't, there was quite a few cases that were brought to court afterwards, because you have certain criteria that you're supposed to follow to approve or deny a zoning decision, and with people not being attorneys, we occasionally, probably more often than not, get brought back into, with the court, to review our decisions. With an attorney on the board, how was your review for decisions percentage?
You know, we've had very few appeals during my period of time, but, you know, if Mike McLaughlin's watching, I would give him a credit to really being the board member that pulls out the code book and takes that board through the criteria, whether we like it or not, he's going to read you the criteria, and it has been very helpful in essence to, so I certainly wouldn't take any credit on my part of helping us avoid appeals, but that is an important aspect that you bring up, is, you know, how do we keep the board focused on the criteria?
Right.
And, and that would be done through facilitating further training. I think when I, when I got on, first got on the board, we had various courses that were offered to us, and the city would send us, and I definitely took advantage of that and appreciated it. I think you've got some new members coming on, they would probably benefit from those training seminars. But, you know, certainly support from a city solicitor when it's necessary, or the assistant.
Just to add to that point, you know, I think, I think professional development is certainly something that would be new for boards and commissions, that probably wasn't necessarily available, you know, when this, when this code was written, nor am I guessing that the city solicitor and assistant city solicitor were at the kind of immediate disposal that we now have with our city solicitors. I could be wrong, but certainly, it seems like the circumstances have changed enough. You're certainly right, that I have no doubt, Mr. McLaughlin is probably at home right now, reading and reciting code at home as we speak. That said, as you have natural turnover on boards, I think it's essential that we continue to have professional development opportunities or training opportunities, and that, you know, we continue to provide as a city resource our access to the city solicitor and assistant city solicitor, because what they do is so essential to the core function of the city.
Can I simply add to that?
Please.
I know that the mayor's office has been focusing on how to better inform their boards, our boards, on what the purpose of their, their function is, and to focus in on that purpose. And I know through my private practice, I've been in front of other boards, and they actually announce a purpose statement to, at the beginning of each meeting, which also helps focus in their mindset as to what their objective of that evening's hearing to be, and that's something that I know the mayor's office wants me to continue to investigate.
Great suggestion. That said, if there's no other questions or comments from councilors, I'd ask that if there's anyone in favor of the petition. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to the petition? If all have been heard, I declare the hearing closed. The matter is now before the council.
Approve twenty-nine two zero one six.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve twenty-nine two thousand sixteen. Anyone wishing to speak to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Orders, CDBG year forty-two.
Motion that we suspend the rules on fifty-two sixteen up to and including sixty-three sixteen.
I have a motion and second, that rules be suspended on matters regarding fifty-two sixteen up to and including sixty-three sixteen. Council Boishman.
I would like to approve zero fifty-eight down sixteen.
Counselor, this is simply to suspend the rules in order to deliberate or take action on these matters.
Aye.
Okay. I have a motion and second to suspend the rules, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Matters are before you.
Motion to approve fifty-two sixteen up to and including sixty-three sixteen, leaving out fifty-eight sixteen.
Second.
I have a motion and second to adopt the orders, CDBG year forty-two excluding, which number?
Fifty-eight sixteen.
Fifty-eight sixteen. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Sixty, sorry, it was fifty-eight, right? Fifty-eight sixteen, order that the sum of nine thousand dollars be appropriated, same to be credited to the MIHN Family Housing Program and charged against CDBG year forty-two. Council Boishman.
Uh, no, it's zero fifty-eight S sixteen. I'm asking to cut this program into the money to be put back into the programs of the SPOTUS, the Boys and Girls Club, and the neighborhood, Neighborhood of, United Neighborhood of Pittsburgh. I think it serves more purpose to put this money back into this program, because we're serving over five hundred youths in the City of Pittsburgh versus four families in the City of Pittsburgh, or five families. And I really believe that we are making a big mistake with nine thousand dollars, and you're cutting a thousand dollars, three thousand, and three thousand.
Council Gina Tally.
First of all, let's get the semantics straight. There were no cuts. If you're given fifty thousand one year, and the next year you requested sixty, and the mayor and the city council give you fifty-three, that's not a cut, that's an increase of three thousand dollars over what you got last year. I hear this, the state and the federal level too, I hear politicians talking about that, I'm not cherry picking you, Paul, but I hear the word "cut" all the time. It is a reduction in the rate of growth. So, if you make ten dollars this year, and you want to make twenty next year, but you can only make thirteen, you didn't have a cut in pay, your pay went up three bucks. You would have liked it to have gone up ten, but it went up three. Everybody in this, in this public services spot. have gone up ten, but it went up three. Everybody in this, in this public services spot received at least what they got last year. There were no cuts anywhere. Now, you're talking about taking the money and reallocating it to these other areas, fine, but I just want the residents to understand, no place was cut in this section. That isn't, that is, that is incorrect. And, and what's more, and, and I, I'm, you know, no, I, I have disagreements with some counselors in the past who have really, really focused on this one item, the smallest item in the whole package. What, I understand the issue about faith-based initiatives and whatnot, but for me, it's always been about what does the money sir, what does the money do? It services homeless families that are in Pittsburgh. It's not servicing Lemonster families, it's not servicing Gardner families, it's servicing Pittsburgh families, families, people with children. So, if, if the council's going to be serious about reducing this line item or any line item in the future, and by reducing, I mean giving them less than what they got last year, we need to make sure we make it clear to these organizations that there will be a phased-in overtime approach to reducing their amount. I don't agree with outright removing the entire amount, but they should get the message that next year, maybe you'll get seven, and the next you'll get six, then you'll get five. We'll wean them off of this dependency. That could be a discussion for another time, but I just wanted it cleared, there were no cuts. And I don't know, I never understood why this one item is always a subject of attention. I, being a math guy, I just, nine thousand divided by nine hundred and fifty grand, point zero, zero, nine, four percent. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dean Atalley. It, just to, to piggyback off of your point, not only is it a, not a cut to these other services, we're talking about the entire pool of money from the federal government being decreased year over year, and, and we're slotted in to the various pools of funding that we're allowed to, to dole out to the various organizations. So, we can only spend so much on community services, we can only spend so much in certain areas, the rest of it has to be earmarked towards infrastructure improvements, if I understand correctly. So, beyond that point, I also look at, you know, for years, this organization has been asked, you know, where and how are you providing care for these families, and there've been concerns about the locations and the role that faith may or may not have played in their ability to provide care. I believe it was also expressed at some point, why does this have to be done in Pittsburgh? Why does Pittsburgh always have to bear the brunt of the service? They've addressed both of those concerns in recent years by, one, setting up their facility in Lemonster, but, but two, providing a, an off-site, non-faith-based center. So, I, I believe they've worked diligently to try to address some of the concerns of this body and of other bodies. So, I, I would say, you know, in many ways, we should applaud these organizations that address concerns that the council have and try, and strive to improve based on where they see criticisms from the council. So, not only am I pleased that they've addressed those concerns and moved in that direction, but when we talk about they've only serviced four families, and I realize there's any number of social services agencies that we should be giving, I would love to see millions of dollars given to by private and public funds. The reality is, there's limited funding that's available. When you talk about four families, that's four families with children that were hopefully provided a service and a shelter to get off the street, to provide themselves the opportunity to transition back to life in Pittsburgh, to provide a sense of normalcy to families and a stabilizing element in their day-to-day life. I think that's some of the best nine thousand dollars we can spend as a city in providing care for our families. Thank you.
Four, fifty-eight, sixteen.
I have a motion, no, do I have a second? Sorry. Counselor Joseph?
I don't have a second either.
Did we have a second? The floor? No. Counselor Joseph?
I guess my only concern about this organization, again, you know my faith-based problems that I have with it, but the other thing that I have a problem with this organization is they've been in six or seven locations in the last ten years, okay? They're, they're supposed to be stability for homeless families, and yet they're a homeless organization, okay? They've been in, they started off in churches, they were thrown, they were not allowed to function in churches because of fire codes. They went over to Saint Bernard's Rectory, they weren't, they weren't allowed, they tore the building down. They went over to a property over on Pearl Street or something over there, then they went to Saint Cecilia's School, now they're at another place in Lemonster. So, they've had, that I know of, five or six locations in the last ten years. And what kind of stability does that offer homeless families? So, I applaud the work that they're doing, I just, I just don't know why we continue to, continue to give money to that organization. They're, they're not a stable organization, they're not the Clayton Neighborhood Association, they're not the YMCA, they're not these, the Boys and Girls Club. They're not stable, but yet we continue to throw money at them, and they just continue to let it go.
Counselor Bochman.
Counselor President, two things I want to say. Never once implied that they didn't care about the four families, I used the four family as a figure of speech. Number two, we cut from fifty-six to fifty-three, we cut from eighteen to sixteen, they got eighteen last year, that's sixteen this year. We cut ten to nine last year, they got ten thousand last year, and they got nine thousand this year. Let me point out to the council, the city of Lemonster, which is more financially better than what we are, only gave five thousand dollars last year. Five, we service five hundred kids in poor sections of Pittsburgh. So, what do we tell their parents when the guy's lighting up a joint, and the kid's outside playing, or he's shooting up? Do we say, "Poor Johnny, poor Johnny?", because it does happen, because I've been in those neighborhoods and I've seen it. So, what do we tell them? Is it better to spend the extra nine thousand dollars on these programs that'll keep the kids off the streets, and have them learn something, like at the Boys and Girls Club, at the United Neighborhood, and at the SPOT of the YMCA? These programs are repeated it again. It's a good program, you ought to be very proud. Why cut something that's expanding the person's mind? I don't understand it. Why? I have no problem, there's three hundred different churches. If they're concerned, if those people are all concerned, the three hundred different parishes, donate money. To Saint Vincent de Paul, this church over here, that church over here, raise up more money and give more money. That's all I'm saying. Why take programs away from the kids in the city of Pittsburgh where it's helping them, really helping them? I seen it. With my own, I wouldn't be here, and I don't like to use the word "kids", I hate it. But this program, these programs are good for them. Thank you.
Motion is before the council. Counselor Dean Atalley. Counselor Dean Atalley.
First of all, according to the information Mr. Cassasso presented to us a while back, they were not cut. Not gonna get into that anymore. Number one, there seems to be a listening, an issue with listening comprehension here. When did I say you didn't care about families in Pittsburgh who need help? I never said it.
I didn't say you did.
Yes, you did.
Oh, I made a mistake.
Okay, number one, everybody's got their, everybody's got all these feelings, okay? Let's calm down for a second. I can't believe I'm saying this to someone, I thought I was the most boisterous one, all right? But, I never said that, number one. Number two, there were no cuts. Number three, you don't wanna vote for it, don't vote for it. You wanna cut it, cut it. Make the motion and cut it. Let's just go forward and do this, okay? Because, again, we wanted to expand demolition. I know Counselor Green put petitions in a while ago to use free cash, you certainly have talked about dilapidated buildings in the past. I'm not saying that we robbed Peter to pay Paul for that, but we were able to fund these organizations at level funding and increase the demolition fund by fifteen times what it was last year. So, residents need to know that. If you don't want it, put the motion before the table and let us vote. But you know what, we've discussed this now on, on one other occasion. I don't, I don't, it's as if this is the first time we're seeing this. Thank you.
Motion, motion to move sixty-five sixteen to its public hearing on May third.
I have a motion and second to send sixty-five sixteen to a public hearing on May third. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Move sixty-six sixteen and sixty-seven sixteen be sent to public hearings on April nineteenth.
I have a motion and second to send sixty-six and sixty-seven sixteen to public hearings on April nineteenth. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carries.
Move sixty-eight sixteen up to and including seventy-one sixteen be sent to their respective committees or boards.
I have a motion and second to send sixty-eight up to and including seventy-one sixteen to their respective committees and/or boards. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
I'll give you the two appointees chosen by the mayor.
Counselors, I just need to further clarify that, that seventy-one sixteen, those two appointees chosen to the mayor will be sent to the Appointments Committee, just a point of clarification.
Motion adjourned.
I have a motion and second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We adjourned.